Alley's, whatever. If you keep it simple and you make it better, and if it's just lighting and greenery or something very feasible and simple to start, uh, why not? But, um, as far as the access to the entrance and fixtures, probably a no-go. Um, what else? I'll think of something. If you guys ever need to reach me, I'm, I'm, uh, available.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Who else would like to address? Yeah, come on up.
So my name is John Boblis. I am not a business owner. I'm just a citizen in a town. But I'm, I'm actually concerned about this because of a safety issue, just dealing with students and knowing people who use that particular alley. Um, one comment I had is I heard of like number of studies that were cited in case studies. And that's sort of like my expertise, which is, um, when you look at studies that say, hey, we've changed this alleyway, they're often done for a particular reason. So what happens is even though you're comparing to something else, they tend to be biased. Are those areas more blighted? And so they had to make that change where there are no businesses there. So I'm sort of looking at that type of data and sort of saying to myself, I, I don't trust that a hundred percent without actually looking at the underlying, you know, assumptions that the study's doing. The same thing with case studies. Case studies are not specific to Oxford. They don't take into account the size of the alley, the types of businesses that are there, the things along those lines. So some of the things that the council has been saying about that, I'm a little bit concerned about because they haven't taken those specific issues and addressed whether those studies were done appropriately and are actually applicable to Oxford.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who, we've got another three minutes and then we're going to start our regular meeting. So if you have a comment, we've got about three minutes left. Hi, Ed, come on up.
Thanks. I, I just came in, so I'm not exactly sure where we are in the meeting. Is this the time we address?
If you're addressing, are we closing all alleys? No, that is not under consideration at all.
Okay. I'm talking about the, the northern arc of the Oxford Trails.
No, we haven't started that.
We'll get to that later in a little bit. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, just let me know.
Thank you for asking. No, that's fine.
But if we end two minutes early, we can take a bio.
Yeah, we just got done with our work session early, so we're, we're listening to people.
Can we adjourn so that we can take a bio?
I would entertain a motion to adjourn the work session.
So made.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We are adjourned for about two minutes and then we'll start up again. Thank you all for coming and thanks for your feedback. Council really does listen and we care.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All, are there any changes? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you very much. At this time, we will move directly to public participation. Uh, so if you have comments on anything that is not on the regular agenda, so it's not on tonight's agenda, or if it is a comment about the work session, or if it is a comment about something on the consent agenda, now would be the time. If you're here about, oh, I don't know, say the bike path, then you would wait until that comes up and we will let everybody speak who wants to, okay? Is there anybody who'd like to address council at this time? Okay. Thank you very much.
Bill, can I just take one minute to thank?
Oh, I've got somebody who wants to speak. So when you come, we give you five minutes. And as this gentleman knows, if you, uh, tell us your name and where you live, we'd appreciate it for the record.
Absolutely. Happy to be here again. My name is Glenn Ellerby, Jr. I live at 158 Silver Leaf Drive. Uh, wanted to talk just very briefly about the work session that we just had and kind of the order of operations that the city brings about certain things to the public's attention. Uh, this is purely my philosophy on these things, and that is, this sounded to me as though it could have been solved in an email. And what I mean by that is, we have a lot of people in here that are business owners and landowners and property owners that were very concerned about the events that were proposed, and they also provided some feedback. I think that there should be some sort of communication strategy that is formed that can go out to those businesses. Now, I am a representative of the Oxford Chamber of Commerce, even though I am not up here speaking on their behalf right now. But that seems like an excellent vehicle for an initiative like this, to get that feedback. Uh, and there you would have some immediate feedback to go on before it gets to this point, and then you have, we'll say, 20 minutes worth of individuals saying this was a bad idea. Uh, just food for thought that if you have other initiatives that are similar in nature, that you go through some of the city's other associated entities and ask those questions so that they can get out to the people that may end up being stakeholders on those particular initiatives. That's it.
Thank you, Glenn. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like, who would like to address council?
Well, if not, Bill, I just want, did want to thank everyone who came out to the work session. Cause I can wait to my remarks, but we got a lot of stuff to get. But while we're on it, I want to wait, the business owners and the other members of the public who, whether they, because they got the email or just saw who came out and shared and, and cared, uh, on December 17th at 6:30. I really appreciate that and we really heard you and we look forward to working with you. Whether we do anything or not, the engagement, it was, I agree with a former councilor Ellerby, it was, the communication was a little awkward, uh, could have been done more smoothly, but I think it started conversation. I hope we can do something productive with it, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move then to item B. It's a notice to legislative authority. Uh, Jessica, you want to just describe it for us real quickly?
This first one is the new hotel, um, the Fairfield by Marriott, which goes by Dora, which is confusing on the agenda, but it's just a beer and wine permit for the new hotel.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any discussion or questions? Can I have a motion?
That we received notification? Is that what we knew?
Yes, received without comment. Is it our second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That is so received and we'll have the second one. And this requires a little bit of explanation since it's come up before.
This one was here previously, but this one declares the doing business as Calendula Bourbon and Tequila Bar and also extends the hours from 1:30 to 2:30 a.m.
Okay. So it's just a change of, it's basically what we had looked at before, but it's a change of name and times. Is there a motion on this one?
Move. We accept notification without comment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. It is received and now we will hear a presentation on our annual report from one of our favorite people. If they're here. Are they here? Oxford Farmer's Market?
No.
Nope. We won't have that this morning, this evening. So maybe they'll show up later and we'll, we'll have it then. Yes. So if not, maybe we'll catch them at the next meeting. Okay. We'll move then to the consent agenda. Um, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Consent agenda is approved. We'll move to resolutions. You can read the first one.
A resolution accepting the recommendation of the Oxford Parking and Transportation Advisory Board selecting a route alignment plan for the northern arc of the Oxford area trail.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
One moment while we figure out our IT. Glenn, upstairs, can you turn back on the presentation or do I need to redo? Thank you.
Hi, Sam.
Good evening. Hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you. Uh, I'm here to deliver. Sorry about my voice tonight, but a little bit lower, lower octave, but, uh, I'm here to deliver a recommendation on behalf of the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board. Um, there was a recent meeting, but actually this, the meeting that this is regarding is back in October. Uh, so going back many years and even the past three years, uh, there was a study done for a portion of the, disappeared. There we go. Okay. Uh, for, for a portion of the, uh, trail, as you know, the Trail Project Multi-Use Path has been, uh, designed and, and portions of it built uh, over the past several years, going back to 2017. Even prior to that, parts of the community park, uh, there was a section, uh, if you saw the staff report, we kind of provided a, a summary. Uh, there was a section that was not funded for planning uh, as far as alignment, uh, back in 2017, although a grassroots organization had done some planning. That was prior to the city kind of taking it over into the comprehensive plan. Uh, and that northwestern arc or northern arc is what we had called a kind of a study area. And so on the screen there is a map of that study area that, uh, was done in 2021. Uh, so over Zoom, there was a public meeting and a consultant was hired, uh, and there was an outreach process, uh, and that resulted in a pause. Uh, there were some, some questions that could not be answered. And so there was a different approach taken, uh, recently. And so, uh, actually earlier this year, several months ago. So looking at the, the public comments from 2021, uh, there were, there were petitions submitted, uh, you may recall that, those of you that were on council at the time, saying that they did not want a, a trail route in their neighborhood and, um, asking for more information. And so, um, there were images and cost estimates that, that we utilized in the feasibility study process more recently. Uh, during the comprehensive plan process, uh, back in 2022, which resulted in the adoption of the comprehensive plan in January 2023, uh, there were a lot of comments, 173 comments, uh, about finishing the trail and, um, 43 comments saying improving bike access with the protected bike lanes. So the idea of mobility definitely was well represented in the comprehensive plan. So that actually ended up being a priority item. Uh, and so there are around 150 objectives in the comprehensive plan, but there are only a few that are kind of highlighted as priorities based on the feedback, uh, through the public engagement process. And so this is just a highlight of that from the comprehensive plan. So taking of the feasibility study that was done by Bear Becker, engineers in combination with city staff, uh, Zachary Moore, city planner, GIS coordinator for the city, as you know, is very skilled and innovative in, at taking data and putting in a digestible format. Uh, and so the tool that, uh, he used on behalf of the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, and that was actually a suggestion of a couple of the board members, is to utilize this tool. Uh, so he took it and really ran with it. And that, what that story map did, and this is just a screenshot of, of that tool, and there's a QR code for those of, uh, anyone in the audience, uh, who may want to check it out. Uh, what that tool does is it, uh, takes, um, several different pieces of information and puts it in a way, uh, that is spatially represented. So data from cost estimations, renderings, um, and actually seven key issues, which I'll look at here in a minute. So going back to the October meeting, just a quick summary, some of this was in the staff report, just for, for anyone, just a real quick highlight. Um, it was a presentation of the feasibility study, not line by line, but more in a kind of a spatial, uh, format. Um, and then the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board did some Q and A, uh, with staff and the consultant. There were actually 13 individuals who spoke. There was quite a few in attendance, in attendance that night. Uh, several spoke, um, and we actually included the meeting minutes to that meeting in the, in the packet for you and tried to summarize some of those comments as well. Um, and then had some dialogue with, uh, the board members, uh, that night. Meeting was held at the middle school to provide plenty of space, not just nice big screen. And, uh, ultimately made a decision to recommend a, a single route plan alignment, uh, which is why you're here tonight. This is much like a comprehensive planning process. So it's not a construction project. It's not a design project. But the difference between what was done now, uh, in 2024 and what was done in 2021, is there was a closer look at, um, additional aspects of doing that analysis. So, um, take, we took some time to develop some renderings, um, some examples of what the current condition is and what the proposed condition might look like, even though a full engineering study, uh, has not been done. It's about a two-hour meeting. So now getting into the study itself, a little bit more granular detail. Um, these were the different options, uh, on the screen that were considered in the feasibility study back several months ago. Um, and so they just each have code numbers. So you'll notice that the area that's not built on the lower left-hand side through the Knowles, uh, village there is, uh, was not part of the study because an easement has been granted, permission's been granted already. So, uh, essentially that study was part of the previous work. There were not really questions about that. So moving on, uh, to portions, uh, west of Country Club Drive and Prevalent and Savannah, there are a couple of options there for 5F and, uh, 5G. And then one of the, uh, the big pushes back several years ago, when the Aquatic Center opened, was providing access for, uh, people around the community, especially for those that did not have their own vehicle, uh, to be able to get to the community park. And so, um, and as you know, uh, you've reviewed Mary Day Park improvements. There's been discussions about land use changes in the past. And so, um, getting access, uh, over to College Corner Pike area and some of those neighborhoods, uh, that may not have, uh, access through public transportation, uh, or direct access. I'm gonna grab a bottle.
I empathize. I had the same problem.
Feel fine. It's just the voice, you know? So, um, that same effort to help, help folks, uh, be able to get, uh, across the tracks at some point in the future. Uh, and as Jessica will talk about here in a little bit, this project from a construction or design standpoint is not actually funded right now, but to have a route plan in mind for something to shoot for in the future is, uh, what the hope was. And so, um, moving into, uh, the area on the direct north side of town, there are kind of three different options that the consultant looked at with us. Uh, taking the urban route was one of them, kind of through existing development. Going kind of on the periphery, but trying to stay close to save some cost, uh, was one of the other options. And then going kind of way out in the country, uh, more of the rural route, um, which some of the feedback from, um, from 2021 was from folks who said, well, I thought this is what, what this was going to be. It would be out on the edge of the community and then, um, it wouldn't be part necessarily of existing neighborhoods. So we realized that there are challenges and kind of trying to weigh the different pros and cons of that. And I'll get to that in the, in the different factors that were used in the analysis. And then moving east, uh, into, uh, connecting back over to where the project kind of first got going again, uh, around the Black Covered Bridge is how to, uh, interact with Brown Road and cross over to Morningside Road and Kelly Drive in those neighborhoods. Ultimately, um, there was a route chosen, but I wanted to highlight, uh, how the story map kind of merged those different pieces of data together. And these are actually scored in kind of a red, yellow, green, uh, by the consultant with our guidance of taking each one of these seven, uh, factors. So safety, user experience, accessibility, so access to neighborhoods or kind of your point A, point B, where are you trying to get to, uh, was, uh, one of the big key issues. And of course, cost and constructability. Um, as Mike alluded to earlier, there's a lot of things we can do if we have enough money. Um, but that doesn't mean it's necessarily the right thing to do. Uh, land acquisition, um, as you know, uh, in order to do public projects, sometimes it does require easements, does require acquisition, and we typically try to do that, uh, on a voluntary basis, compensating reasonable amounts, uh, of, of money that are necessary to acquire access. Uh, but sometimes that is difficult if there's not existing easements. So going out and acquiring new, um, can, uh, cause projects to take more time. Um, environmental impact, of course, uh, one of the original visions going back many years ago was to have kind of a, um, a way to showcase the unique nature of Oxford, being an urban area within a really beautiful, a kind of green rural landscape. And, um, in order to do that in a way that is as least impactful as possible to the, to the natural features. And then of course, maintenance, um, developing, uh, we've learned a lot over the past few years in developing, uh, multi-use paths in areas that did not have any infrastructure previously is sometimes challenging and being able to, uh, keep those clean and tidy and, uh, avoid, uh, some of the encroachment of roots and trees and things that just make, that's the reason why the, the structure is there in the first place. A lot of times it's into, to enjoy that. Uh, so taking all those factors together, um, was a little bit of a challenge to help the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board make a good recommendation, but also allow the public to kind of see what, what the balance, uh, balancing act was. Uh, cost estimations was something we did not do in 2021, uh, and that's something that was, um, asked for. And so, uh, it did cost a little bit more money to do that, to get that information from the consultant, um, but we felt like it was, uh, justifiable in this case to kind of add another layer of information to deciding what that, uh, route plan, uh, should be. Renderings was something else that was asked for as well. Uh, this is just an example. Uh, we took the, uh, the rendering on the right is what, uh, came from the consultant and looking at kind of a cross-section, if you kind of slice, uh, through the, the roadway, and this is an example of North Ridge Drive, uh, but really anywhere along the trail, if you go onto the story map, you can click those stars and see what that section might look like. In a more rural environment, um, you would see more, more green space, more landscaping, uh, more open area, but this particular section, um, is through, through a subdivision. So on, on the left shows, um, taking a sidewalk and replacing it with a paved, uh, double wide, essentially wider than the sidewalk path, uh, 11 feet is what the current standard is. And so taking all that and putting it into a map tool. So, um, what I'm trying to do is just kind of demonstrate the amount of effort that went in, you know, to, to helping the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board. And ultimately what, uh, came up, uh, that came up with, uh, through, uh, the various elements is a single route, uh, which we have highlighted in the staff report, uh, that was recommended by the board. And there's a link for it as well on our webpage, and I'll turn it over to Jessica for any gaps that you can fill in.
Thank you, Sam. Um, just wanted to add a few comments as we're kind of just tag teaming on this project. Um, I want to be clear that this is very much a planning document and that we are very much trying to support the intent of the voters when they pass that levy for this trail system. And also in the comprehensive plan with, there were a lot of comments like, please finish it. At the same time, a lot of people are like, why, why isn't it way out there? And I just want to clarify, the way out there is in the township, but it's not in our jurisdiction. So our ability to do any sort of eminent domain is almost impossible. And so what we did is we looked at, well, what could we do with what we have and bring it in? And so we really looked at those routes that we felt were viable and feasible within city limits. And so that's what you're seeing today. Um, and so I also want to be clear that this is very much a line on a map. There's no design, there's no engineering, and there's no money. And so whenever we would want to do something, I think we would look at first, well, first, is there money to match any sort of grant that we want to apply for? The earliest that we would apply for a grant would be summer of '26, because we really need to see how Phase Five shakes out as far as impact to the levy. Like, are, is, what is going to be left, if anything? And then second, I think we would look for feasible routes with cooperative landowners, um, areas that are likely to become subdivisions in the future, um, things like that before we would start actually looking at actually doing a grant application. So with that, I just want to say, I've been proud to work on this project, um, for years and excited to bring this for you today. And also the Oxford Parking and Transportation Board meeting with the story map, just huge kudos to Zachary Moore for his work on creating that map. But also, it was an amazing public meeting, um, that was respectful and challenging and yet great dialogue all through that. So with that, this is our recommendation. We do have Parking and Transportation Board members here, um, but happy to answer any questions of council.
And do you want to, before I go to public comment, do you want to identify any areas that you've received a lot of comment about that are particularly?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Of note?
Savannah Drive and North Ridge Drive were where we got, uh, the majority of the comments in, in the past couple of weeks. Uh, there were actually a handful that did not make it into the packet that came in today and yesterday. Um, and I know one of those individuals is not able to be here tonight, but those were the areas that I think Jessica and I are in agreement that if those are areas that just cannot be solved, we'd still like to get at least some aspects of the plan adopted soon, uh, so that if there are some grant application deadlines coming up, we could start to look at that. But we realized that it's also close to the holidays. That was another concern we got from someone. You know, why would this be discussed at a time when it's difficult for people to attend meetings? So just trying to share as much as I can.
Thank you. Appreciate it. At this time, we're glad to invite people from the public to comment. Again, we'll give you five minutes and if you'll give us your name and where you live, we appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Carla Blackmore Rice. I live at 400 West Fine Street, um, in Oxford. And I'm the current chair of the Oxford Parking and Transportation Advisory Committee, so I'm pleased to serve as, I guess, commission. Uh, I'm pleased to kind of serve in that capacity. And I thought we did have a really excellent public meeting where we discussed this. Um, staff's preparatory work and ability to give us a tool that allowed us to envision what this would look like was, was kind of next level. Um, it was really helpful for me to kind of understand what it looks like going through a suburban area. And I think that responded to many of the questions that had come up in that earlier round of planning that had been put on hold. Um, I think that one of the concerns that did come clearly through our meeting, our public meeting, was a concern around the existing, uh, traffic. People using North Ridge as a cut through, concerns around, uh, safety at the intersections, you know, especially like, um, the path will, will go between Dufer and, and?
Honor.
Honor. Uh, and those two intersections, right where that U shape is, essentially right in the middle, those two intersections are both three-way intersections, um, and they're both pretty treacherous, cause there's, there's very few cues to tell you to slow down in that area. And I think many of the concerns we heard were related to, uh, loading additional, uh, pedestrians, potentially vulnerable users into an area that already has kind of a known traffic threat. And so, um, an impression that I have is that it's important for us to heed those concerns and to think about how we can do traffic calming, how we can ensure that those three ways, those three, three ways are a little easy to miss. Uh, and so there are some simple things we could do, even just painting stop bars, uh, at those intersections that can go a really long way towards making that area, you know, safer. Um, the other thing that I just want to reiterate is our understanding of this, it's, it's really a line. It's a, it's a conceptual line that gives us the opportunity to, uh, seek funding and do planning into the future. I think as a conceptual line, it's a really good one. It's one that would allow people who live in this area to access a wonderful amenity, um, into the future. And, uh, there could be different ways of accomplishing the build-out of this trail along that path. And that could include, for example, sharrows. Uh, that might be the appropriate treatment in some of these situations. That wasn't what we voted on. We, we recommended a full, uh, standard path as has been, you know, the practice of the, um, the, oh, so, the oats so far. Uh, but there are other ways, there are creative ways that we could accomplish this. And then it would be fulfilling this vision that our community has voted on, to have a trail that circumnavigates our city and allows people to access our key amenities and our wonderful recreation opportunities from all different neighborhoods. So, uh, to my mind, this trail allows the most access to those things for the most people. Um, and I think that it, it, you know, for that reason, I'm really proud to stand here behind it. Um, and it's something that our Parking and Transportation Advisory Board is proud to recommend. So happy to answer any questions that come up after.
Thank you, Carla. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this resolution? So if you have comments on this part of the bike trail, this is your time if you want to speak. Welcome. Come on up. We're glad to have you here.
Hello. Uh, my name is Jim Vinch. I'm a recent, uh, arrival to Oxford. I moved here about a year ago and I'm an avid cyclist. Um, I participated in the Planning Commission meeting that we had in October. Oh, I forgot to give you my address. I live at 85 Lantern Ridge Road in Oxford. Um, so at the meeting in, in October, I explained all the personal reasons why I really wanted to see this bike path be completed. I'm an avid cyclist. I'm an avid cyclist, you know, I, Oxford drivers are generally pretty generous, and we, and I can share the roads with them with no problem, but it's nice to have a safe place to go to ride, especially after dark or when the weather's not so great. So, but my comments today are more about your role as city councilors in, in what your responsibilities are as far as completing this trail. And I assume that at some point in the past, someone brought this proposal to city council as a, as a, as a, as a vision, right? Like, here's the completed, here's the idea, we're going to have a 13-mile bike path that's going to go around the city of Oxford without any specific alignments laid out. And I wasn't here, maybe you weren't here either, but the council obviously voted to approve it. They thought enough of it to think, okay, let's approve this, let's move forward on this. And so over the course of this last several years, it seems the city of Oxford has done just that. They moved forward with construction of, of several sections of this bike route and assumed that they invested millions of dollars in this project. And so my question now is, you know, you have a two-thirds completed bike trail, and the council already voted to, to have a bike path, a, a complete bike path. So I kind of see it as the council's obligation to complete what they originally intended to start. My job, my, my speech isn't so much about where this alignment should go, that's really up to you. It's about the fact that I think that this has been proposed, we've invested a lot of money in it already, and we need to take the last steps to complete the project, or it's going to be a waste, right? And so your job as city councilors, I see it, you know, should be to establish a vision for the city of Oxford. And you're going to hear, and I assume throughout the years, that every city council meeting throughout history, there's been objections to every single proposal that's ever been brought for city council, right?
Pretty much.
Right. And so, you know, the path of least resistance for you is to probably say no to this, or, you know, people, then you won't hear complaints from people, or as many complaints from people. But that's really, as I see it, it's not really your job, it's to be visionaries, to see, to look at Oxford and how it's going to be in the next 50, 100 years, and to have that long-term vision for building a city, irrespective of what the, these objectors may say. Is my time done?
No, you've got two more minutes.
So, you know, I mean, people are obviously going to have criticisms with anything you do, whether it's because of the uncertainty of change, or, you know, for financial reasons or other legitimate reasons, but you as council people need to see, be able to see beyond that and to, to look at the, the long-term vision of the city. And I would really like to see this bike path completed. It's one of the reasons why, because of things like this, that I decided to move my family to Oxford.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We got somebody coming from the back row. Welcome.
How are you doing? Well, thank you. Evening, city council. How are we doing?
Good.
How are you? Good. So my name's Sean Wagner, I'm here with Karen Furk. I live at 601 Honor Lane, you are 796 to four, right? So we, along with Mahmoud Khan, who lives at 591 Honor, are in kind of a unique position. So with all this development that's being considered and, and bike path that's being considered putting through various properties, we actually already have an existing bike path that is adjacent to our properties. And it's part of a homeowners association that was informally established well before we even bought, bought our land. And so we want it just to be known in the public record that, you know, we had shared some concerns and want to iron it out with the city and had, have had conversations with Jessica and with Sam about, about our concerns and, you know, the, the question of the actual right of use and the easement. Now, we have negotiated in, in good faith and think that we've come to an agreement and want, want that to be understood, but also want that to be put on record so that even if you approve this, that is going to be, that is going to be addressed, so that our concerns are fully, fully considered. And that the other piece that we included, and I appreciate the Parking Transportation Board already mentioning as well, at the meeting in October, we talked a lot about that traffic, and it was properly described in, in terms of those two three-way stops at the four and at Honor. And again, our children are subject to some of that, some of that traffic already. The city, by approving this path, is opening everybody who uses that path to, to those concerns. And so again, we've negotiated, we've got an MOU that we expect to sign, but it does address those two issues, our particular issue, and then also that, that safety. So want you all to know about that. I don't know from administrative standpoint what, what kind of, what kind of transparency there is from that standpoint, but that's our expectation in conjunction with your review of this matter tonight.
So are you part of the whole Northridge?
So we're, we're very unique, right? Because from our standpoint, there's three homes, there's three homes on that walking path. We're, we're used to having people on a walking path. We are the only, as far as I know, the only existing piece of path that already exists. We're the artery that connects that sucker for you guys. I mean, seriously, right?
No, I appreciate that, yeah.
So, you know, kind of vital, right? We don't love it, but at the same time, it's part of what we've always experienced. Everybody else is going to have their own concerns, and throughout this process, we tried to educate folks in the neighborhood to say, hey, you know, this is the star situation, we need, need to address it. I think we've done that. While also talking about the safety concerns, which is something that is already existing, I think could be worse, depending on how this all plays out and what the design looks like, but, you know, we'll leave it to, to the city's hands to determine that.
That's very helpful.
But the rest of the folks in Northridge, you know, they're, I, I know they've, they provide a different comment too.
Okay.
So yeah, that's, that's where we stand.
That answers my question.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
So I can add some context to that. About a month ago, Sam sent me a record plat for that area. When it was dedicated, there was a bike path easement put into the plat. It was not clear whether or not that was intended to be a private easement or a public easement. And looking at it logically, I, I, I think that it, one can make a, a case that it is a public easement. Regardless, it is there, it's recorded, and we entered into some discussions with the property owner to address their concerns, which primarily came down to the issue of whether or not private property owners have any potential liability. I can address that later. And then secondly, the concerns over traffic. And within that MOU, we've included a situation, an agreement, the, the traffic situation is being monitored, is being monitored now. There are some thoughts about how to address concerns over traffic and safety that could lead to a traffic study that may not be necessary, but that's all kind of baked into the concept of saying, recognizing that the plan goes forward, we have an understanding that we'll address the concerns of these property owners, but also the use of the trail more broadly for the general public.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for coming.
And if I could just add one more thing, the process that we would envision, of course, is there would be a resolution by, to council, but more fundamentally, any land use easement, which is the traditional matter, the, the manner in which the city's been obtaining access is through permanent easements, is it has to be presented to council by way of ordinance because it involves land.
Sure. Yeah, and we, and we understand that. The only point that I would make is, you know, we, we engaged with an attorney just to understand maybe an alternative point of view to what the, what the city has. I think the resolution that we've come up with puts us right in the middle in terms of a place that we can live with. But, but yeah, just, just to be clear, that it, it was an organized and thoughtful conversation from, from both parties in their, in their legal counsel.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to address this one? Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. My name is Thomas Misko. I live at 598 Honor Lane. That's, part of my property is on Northridge, the rest is on Honor. I live right across the street from your previous speaker. There, there's an old German aphorism, "Venshun denshun," which means what is to be done is to be done properly. And I voted for the funding for this trail. I use this trail every day. I use it for an hour, an hour and a half every day. And I drive, although I could walk to the trail, I drive to the Black Covered Bridge because the, the one thing I don't want to see on my walk every day is traffic, houses, people. That, that defeats the entire purpose. And so I could walk, and, and if this recommended route gets approved, I will still drive to the Black Covered Bridge to, to start my walk. There is absolutely no reason to have, the, the intention of this trail is to be in a prairie, it's to be in a woods, it's to be near a river. If you cannot, at this time, create a route that, that achieves those things, I, I heard from David multiple times tonight, then maybe we shouldn't do it. Maybe we should wait, maybe we should wait till we have more funding, maybe we wait until we have more approvals, maybe we wait until something changes. And that's okay. It's okay to wait to make it, to make it good, to make it what it's supposed to be and not the quickest, or the cheapest, or the easiest possible way to complete the circle. Should the circle be completed? Absolutely, but not through residential areas. This defeats the entire purpose of the trail, makes it unusable, unwanted from a variety of perspectives. And I'm not even talking about my own personal concerns of having a trail that, that would be right in front of my, my driveway, actually in my driveway, right in front of my garage. So it's, it's more about what the spirit of the trail is supposed to be and, and what we should be trying to achieve as a city. I, I think a lot of property owners would like to talk about personal concerns as well. Thank you so much for the time and your consideration.
We appreciate it very much.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Brian Malou. I live at 212 Northridge Drive, and I've lived there since 2003. I echo all those comments I just heard there so that I can change my comments a bit. In addition to, you know, being a resident, I'm also an accountant, I'm an accounting professor. So I look at things through several lenses, first and foremost being cost benefit. The, the amount of cost to, you know, tear up everybody's driveway, and then, you know, there's obviously having to replace them with the same type of cement and all those sorts of things, just doesn't seem, doesn't seem to make sense. I'm also pretty good at reading maps, and so I looked at that, at North, Northridge and Honor and all those. I look behind all of our properties and it's wide open, you could go right behind all of us, have the nature. I kind of know you already tried that because one of my, one of my colleagues owned some of that property. And so I know that there's going to be roadblocks at, at every, at every place you go. And I also use that, I drive Black Bridge. I actually think that road from Black Bridge to Morning Sun is your biggest problem. There is no sidewalk, college students walk on the wrong side of the road with headphones on, somebody's going to get hurt there. And it's just a matter of time. So that's, I would prioritize that road first and foremost from a safety perspective. I do think you should use probably flashing lights across Brown Street, that would make sense. I mean, I think there are certain things to do, but again, I, I can't understand why you would want to tear up everybody's house along that road. I'm an avid walker all over this city. I was in Springbrough today. They, they do a very good job of, you know, mixing paved back bike paths when they hit a subdivision, sidewalks and roads take over. See the same thing across the, you know, the train bed all the way from Terrace Park through Milford through, you know, Loveland and all those areas. There's lots of great areas and lots of ways to do it. Circle, I get it, you'll do it if you can do it. I think that makes some sense. And access for people to get to the park and the, the pool, that stuff makes sense too. But those who voted for a levy, I guarantee you did not vote for a path across their front yard, all right? That's not what they were thinking about. So I think you're mixing, I don't think people are mostly against the path. I think most of the comments, and I'm representing a number of my neighbors who did have plans tonight. It's, it's an accounting problem first and foremost, cost benefit. And really, if you're doing things that don't financially make sense, that's when people start wondering if it's a pet project or what you're really trying to do. So I think it's just smarter to think about areas where you won't disrupt traffic patterns, you won't disrupt neighborhoods, and then ultimately make the goals you want. Because I do think, I do think the paths are great. So, and I contributed to the Ruder Reserve, I think more of those wooden type walkways is just some good stuff here. And I, I think you want the whole community smiling about it versus having to come on Tuesday before, you know, Christmas and argue against it. I don't, I don't feel good about it, but it just doesn't seem right.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. Thank you. And is there anybody else who would like to address it? Yes, come on up. You can arm wrestle for it. Anne, you're next.
Hello. My name's Ken Vincent, and I live at 345 Cobblestone Court. We moved here about a year and a half ago, and before I moved here, I dug into some of your plans, and I saw the trail system plan, I was very excited. We moved from Cincinnati where I was on a transportation committee in Anderson Township for 20 years and worked there for 30 years. And a lot of what we did was, was trail systems, and we had a lot of these same types of issues that are happening now with easements and, and people not understanding exactly what would happen with, with the trail and how would it affect them. I'm one of the people who are saying, okay, well, we need to finish this. And from what I understood earlier in the meeting, approving it today wasn't approving this specific alignment, but I wonder what would happen if we didn't approve it tonight? Does it kick the can down the road a couple of years? And then we say, well, why don't we finish this? And what do we do at that point? How much more does that cost? So those are the types of things, you know, that I've considered. One of the areas where they blocked the trails completely was Terrace Park. It was a Little Miami Trail. It stopped at the Milford Trailhead, right across from Little Miami Brewing, where it is now, for 10 years or more. And people used every reason not to have it go through Terrace Park. And at that time, it was a different situation than going through a neighborhood, it was going through a banded railway, or an old railway. And they eventually did put it through, and the people who use it most are the people of Terrace Park, and property values went up, everybody uses it. I know that's a slightly different situation than they have here, than we have here, but, you know, I use the trail every day too. Going through Northridge, I never thought, when I saw that, I thought, well, it's just going to go down the street. I never thought there would be a trail through people's yards. I can understand the problems with that, so, so that's my comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anne, now is your chance.
Hi, everyone. My name is Anne Wicks, and I'm here with my husband, Bob Wicks. We live at 205 Northridge Drive, and... Well, I love the Oxford Trail System, and I've used it so much, but just like one of the former speakers said, I either walk or bike down to the covered bridge and then just enjoy all that beauty and quiet and everything else. And so I agree with what he said about, I can't imagine anyone wanting to, to go through the neighborhood because it's not quiet and it's not safe. I am wondering, I just can't, I've been trying really hard to imagine how this would work out and thinking, I have a hard time getting out of my driveway as it is. I'm really frightened that I will, you know, miss someone on the sidewalk or someone on the street. And I just don't know how anyone can solve that. There are many, many driveways, some of the driveways that are let out on Northridge Drive, in fact, at least six of them are multi-complex kinds of circles where they have all kinds of apartments and duplexes, and students and other community members are coming and going all the time. I have to be really careful just walking down the sidewalk and watch really carefully. And if it were a, a bike path, how many people on bikes want to stop every five minutes and look both ways to make sure they're not, a car isn't coming across their path? Or, I, I just think it's very, very, very dangerous for children, for people who are on their bicycles, for people who are in cars. It's bad enough as it is. And I, I don't know what your solution will be, but like another speaker said, I, I love it, and I of course voted for the levy, let's do it, but in a safe and timely manner. Well, maybe not timely, I shouldn't use that word because it is, has been a long time. And honestly, I just am so grateful for everything that's already been done. It's beautiful, it's wonderful. Too many driveways.
Thank you, Anne.
Okay.
Very much appreciate it. Is there anyone else? Okay. He's looking just in case, I don't want to cut anybody off. All right. We will move, who? Oh, Sam.
I was just going to answer some questions.
Oh, sure, go ahead. Yeah, and then we'll have council discussion.
Some, some questions that have come up during the comments, I just wanted to answer a few of those. Actually, Carla Blackmore, who's the Chair of the Parking Transportation Advisory Board, talked about the, some of the traffic concerns that came up in the public meeting, and I just wanted to affirm from the staff side that yes, we've acknowledged those, we've been discussing those at the staff level. We're planning to do some analysis. We're planning to do some analysis, kind of along the lines of what Mr. Wagner had talked about there in the Honor and Do Four area as well. So as pertains to those, to that follow-up, that's something we'll definitely be working on. I also wanted to, there was also a comment from Carla talked about, and I think it was her, maybe someone else talked about sharrows. That could be a possibility too. If it doesn't work out for whatever reason.
You and I both know what a sharo is, but some people in the audience may not. Would you briefly?
Sure. Yeah. It's essentially using the public roadway as a, it's actually legal to use the public roadway for bicycles. A bicycle is considered a vehicle. But by putting a paint marking on the pavement, it encourages and educates the other users of the roadway, the vehicle drivers, that to expect bicycles on the roadway. It's typically only done on lower volume roadways and lower speed roadways. We have several of those around town. So that could be one solution. Or it could be a temporary or an interim solution until there's a more appropriate time for any changes. And kind of in response to some of the comments about, from some of the neighbors in the Northridge Drive area utilizing the existing sidewalk and not making any changes. There was a question about what would happen if a plan was not adopted or approved soon by council? And the answer to that is that it would kick the can down the road from the sense of, yes, we may want to apply for grant funding in the future, but because 80% of the funding for these projects are coming from outside sources and about 20% is local funding or levy funding, roughly speaking, there is a, we would not score well when it comes to the grant applications because there is a public engagement aspect where there's essentially a requirement or a very strong encouragement to have a comprehensive plan or a planning document, some kind of engagement says, yes, this route or this idea was publicly discussed previously. So we would not score well if a plan was not adopted. Or it would have to be, the plan would have to be then discussed before the grant application can be even submitted. So that would make it difficult from a time standpoint. The last comment I wanted to respond to, I think there was a couple of folks who talked about that this alignment might mean the usage of people's yards. And so some of the renderings that were shown were actually using existing right-of-way. So it would not be actually needing to take private land. But because that is kind of treated like the front yard, that tree lawn or that green space that's between the sidewalk and the roadway, it feels like the yard even though it's actually public land for public use. So I just wanted to comment on a few of those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, councilors. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
So I could just.
I'm going to look over here first because Dave obviously has something to say about it, but I just want to give other people a chance.
Well, I was going to share the Oxford Parking and Transportation, but, you know, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, no, please, go ahead.
I just was going to see whether anybody else wanted to speak.
I can jump in.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Optab, for taking this on and tabulating the scores and looking at the routes and having the public meeting. I wish this were split up a little bit more. I mean, I like the path where it gets us to the railroad tracks, which again is going to be another monumental cost lift to get us over the railroad tracks a second time. I don't love going through the neighborhoods. We had this discussion three years ago about prevalent drive and it kind of went the same way. I would support using Northridge Drive with sharrows until maybe, you know, we grew a little bit as a city and were able to easily obtain, you know, a more rural path through the woods to the north. But at this point, you know, going down Northridge might be our only way to actually at some point finish the trail within the next decade. We got into this trail, you know, not only for the residents, but it's an economic development factor. People that come to your town to ride around on your bike trail spend an average of $110 a person and sometimes they stay multiple days just to come see your bike trail. And eventually our bike trail will connect to other bike trails and bring more people to town. So, you know, finishing the trail gets us all kinds of things. It gets us, you know, races and trail days and people that come here to ride the trail. So I guess what I'm saying is I'd love to see it finished, but I'm not totally crazy about this route.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question related to that? If we did do a temporary sharo, the idea of being, developing more later elsewhere, would that hurt our ability to get money, to get funding since we sort of have a halfway solution?
No, I don't think it would. As long as you have what's considered a logical terminus from your kind of point A to point B in your grant application. So like to say it's from Mary Day Park to something else, you know, to Contreras Drive or whatever it might be, to connect to some other kind of a trailhead, you know, or some kind of a major destination, then no, it would not.
I guess there's two questions there. One is the funding for the sharo, whatever we have to do there and connect the other path, but also when we go to develop it later?
No, no, it would not. No, it'd be an upgrade of some type. Now, the scoring criteria do change and there are different pots of money from different sources, but based on currently no upgrading or changing, would not take away the possibility.
Thank you.
David.
So I guess I just want to kind of say that on behalf of Optab, which is a really great group of people, some of them are kind of bike advocates like I am, but, you know, Kathy Foley from the Chamber of Commerce and Lee Fisher. This was not an easy thing to wrestle with because I think all of us have a vision of what the Oxford Area Trail we want it to be. And for the first two-thirds of it, it was pretty straightforward. It went through Miami lands. It fulfilled the vision quite easily. And it became more complicated when we got on this part of town because we've run out of public land to build it on. And then you're left with a set of kind of imperfect choices. You know, and I think that, and the conversation about what the trail is and what it should be depends on who you ask. For some people, it's a rural experience, but for other people, it was about access to schools. And if you look at the comprehensive plan goal, you know, it's about all of those things, to expand the Oxford Area Trail System by completing the perimeter loop and linking to neighborhoods and commercial areas. So, you know, then how do you balance these things? And I guess I would say on behalf of Optab, and I think Ms. Blackmark kind of captured this, it ultimately came down to feasibility. You know, like our ability, much as I would love for it to continue in a rural setting, it's in the township, private landowners. So it's at least in the immediate future, infeasible. And really, at that point, the only likelihood of it becoming part of the city would be through annexation and subdivision and then it would be through houses anyway. So the possibilities of a rural pathway are slow, slim, that you're left with a set of less perfect choices. And I think on behalf of Optab, and I really do want to thank staff because what they did was, like Carla said, kind of top water planning, which is trying to weigh all these different things. If you, for some people, they say, put it in my front yard, but not in my backyard. And some people say, put it in my backyard and in my front bar. Some people put it over there and not over here. And what we learned through the exercise is that there are trade-offs involved in absolutely every alignment. And people have different opinions about them. And so I think what this was is where it was in the city and we controlled it. The backyard was better than the front yard and that's what we have behind prevalent, you know? To provide access and also something of the rural setting. The north side of town, it's either in the public right-of-way or realistically not at all. And so it becomes then kind of a question of how committed are we to seeing the perimeter path through? And if I thought there was a possibility through annexation that we could have the dream path, but like I say, in that circumstance, it may be like Owl's Landing, which is at that point, you know, not a rural context. So it was a difficult, and I really tip my hat, if you were at the Optab meeting, you saw that people wrestled with these choices. There are no perfect choice. And some of these things were kind of difficult choices. We have committee members who it touches almost directly on their property and they, you know, and we hear all these concerns. I mean, they're legit concerns. And so this was, I would just say, I was really proud of staff and Optab for arriving at what was the best set of recommendations from a set of imperfect choices. And so if we want to, so, but I would say it's one final thing that, and if, one way or the other, if it's a friendly amendment to this, we did have a specific conversation about Northridge and people really brought up to us the idea that like, Northridge is just not safe, you know, that we have cut-through traffic, we have speeding traffic. And I think Optab, we kind of verbally said, we have real commitment to addressing those issues, whether we do the path or not. And so I actually have some language here, which I would like to kind of put on paper, that commitment to the people of Northridge, that we address their public safety concerns in the short term through some enforcement. But in the long term, if we're going to redesign the street, that we use traffic calming and other things to solve their problem, what's in per all, because they shouldn't have to deal with the cut-through traffic that they do. And to be honest, narrowing the street, some of those things could actually address, you know, some of these improvements could make Northridge a much nicer street to live on for everyone, starting with residents. So yeah, I just want to thank again staff and Optab for helping sort through. There was no perfect solution here and I just think the people did the best they could.
Thanks, Dave. I want to thank Optab as well. I think you put it very well, that it's very difficult to come up with any solution that's going to satisfy everyone. That said, I just want my colleagues to know, I'm adamantly opposed to putting the pathway across everybody's driveway. I just think there's too many cuts. And we had the same problem with Country Club. And when we talked about that at an earlier time, and the more I thought about it and every time I drove down those streets, I thought about having all those stops and cuts. Now, there are a couple of places where we are in front of people's houses and there's little warning signs on the pathway, which if there's two or three driveways, that makes sense. Yeah, be alert on that. But if you're going across, I don't know how many properties there are on Northridge, but I think there's an awful lot of them and it would, to me, it's untenable to put it right through the middle of it. Now, are there options? And I think there are and I do still am committed to us having a bike path that works. One op, first of all, our money is not assured for any of this. And so that's important to know. I, for one, would be willing to be happy with part of it being agreed upon tonight and let part of it still think about it. Can we go behind properties? I think Professor Baloo mentioned that there's land back behind those. And I think people would probably go along with that like they did on Section 5, I believe it is. And so that's something that maybe could be a little bit better. I do recognize the individual who sent us a written message and I just want to let him know that we read it and take it into consideration. He was one of the ones who didn't want it in his backyard. And so I'm not going to be in favor of approving the entire plan. I just can't see it going through Northridge subdivision. I don't think that's a good idea. I think it's dangerous for the bikers. I use the path a lot. I don't want to go through, I'm like Mr. Misco, I don't really want to go through a neighborhood. I'd rather be going around the neighborhood. So I think there are two options that I see. One is, let's draw the line around the neighborhood for now, thinking that eventually in the future, we may expand there and like in Owl's Landing, the developer can help with the development and production of part of that trail. The other is to put what remaining money we have into a very good bike lane down Contreras. And let's bring people into town. Let's support our local businesses. Bring it right into town and then they can go up Main Street, have sharos, go up Main Street and back to the covered bridge. So I recognize I may be a minority on this, but I support the people who came and I would have the same comment they did, basically. I don't think I would want it to have that many cuts and I wouldn't want to ride my bike through there. And I would probably be like Tom Misco. And even if it was in front of my house, I would still drive over to the covered bridge to start my bike ride. So that's just my two cents.
So I have some sense as well. So I used to live over on Hester Road. Today I learned I am a minority of people who would jog down Hester all the way down Northridge to the covered bridge. I didn't do that every time. Sometimes I did get into my car and drive over to the covered bridge because maybe running past houses wasn't the vibe. So I think that even if we do have the trail, and I am not here to invalidate anybody's experience, but I have never even had a near miss of getting hit by a car while running on Northridge. Yes, there are cars, but I felt exorbitantly safe running on Northridge. My husband biked to work every day down Northridge. The pavement's not amazing and a sharo would be great because I didn't, you know, love it. There were definitely spots for him to get hit, but I was way more worried about Brown Road than I was about Northridge. So I acknowledge that I don't live on Northridge anymore. Not a property holder there, but I don't hate that as an intermediate placeholder so that we can at least move the plan forward, is that we keep the Northridge route with the sidewalk and sharos. And then we can just hold it because it is a, pardon my language, but it's a damned if we do, damned if we do, damned if we do set of paths. There are people who will point blank block this if we try to move it back behind people's houses, farther in the rural area. And I acknowledge that not everybody wants to run past homes, I think, or bike past homes and that's fair. We have lots of other trailheads that are marginally easy to get to that are much more remote. I don't anticipate that people will be running or biking the full 13 miles every time they go on the trail. So like tomorrow, I may drive to Pfeffer because I'm sick of looking at the covered bridge, even though I love the covered bridge with my whole heart. There is a lot of variety on the trail. So I think to really, truly put that pause, when this is just a line and it's a placeholder, I get a little antsy about the hold there. So I, in transparency, would support this for now.
Okay.
Sarah's going down this way.
Yeah.
But you can go, go first.
Well.
No, I was really going for you, but that.
Okay, I will go.
Who am I? I'm just.
I support what Councilor French had said and, you know, this came up when she and I were both running for council three years ago. So I understand a lot of the angst that exists around this. One of the things I remember last time was that a lot of members of the public were mistrustful of the city because they felt that the city had grant money and we were just trying to, well, not we, I wasn't on council yet, but the city was trying to ram this through in order to use the grant money that they believed already existed. This approach is very different. The city is saying, we want to share the plan so that we can apply for funds. And really, this is, as Alex said, just sort of a line, something to get us to the place where we can start planning and thinking this through. When I was in Windsor, Ontario, so it's not the United States, it's Canada, where my brother lives, my dad and I used a trail that felt very much like a community trail. And people were using it. Now, I wasn't there to know how it started. Oftentimes, we use these spaces and trails and we enjoy them and we don't really think about the consternation that might have existed in creating them. They are used in the future by people who enjoy them. And so I think, given how long it takes to secure funding, to plan, I support supporting this now and continuing with the conversations and the plans moving forward, understanding the concerns that the community has raised. But I also want to say something else that to me feels fundamentally different than what I experienced even just sitting in the audience with the trail discussion three years ago. You know, when we talk about mobility, we usually think, or accessibility, we think about it in terms of physical access from one place to another. I also think about emotional and psychological access and mobility. And one of the litmus tests that I use, and this is a compliment to the community and the tone that I'm hearing today, is if my nephews, who don't live in Oxford, were to come and visit me like they will be doing in a few days and they were going to. come and visit me, like they will be doing in a few days, and they were going to use the Oxford-area trail, would they feel the psychological and emotional safety and access, knowing that they're going to use the trail and be in communities that welcome them and don't look at them suspiciously, because they're strangers? And the sense that I get from everything that was raised today is that they would, that, you know, the concerns that have been raised are concerns of, you know, how many cuts there are, but I haven't heard anything that makes me feel like there is suspicion or mistrust of people who look different, or people who aren't familiar, coming through the neighborhood. And that just hearten, that just gladdens my heart, almost a little emotional talking about it. We'll figure this out as a community, if we keep the conversations going. And I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I do want to support this so we can move forward and continue to discuss, because this is a wonderful community that I know my family members can enjoy and feel psychologically and emotionally safe in. So, thank you.
Jason.
I agree with so much of what has already been said. And it seems, which you just alluded to, that if we go forward with this, it doesn't lock us in, right? We still can investigate other options, right? Is there any reason not to make that more explicit? Like if 5B section is possible in the future, can we write, "We approve either 5A or 5B going forward"?
Want me to answer that?
Please.
I think, based on what the discussion is and what we're hearing, it might be best to have 5A as sharo, and have a single alignment. I think a single alignment is still better than having an alternative for the future, because that was the issue that we had with the grassroots study, was we have all these options, but it's hard for us to apply for grant funding if we don't have a single alignment. And so the 5A is still a single alignment, but if you want to respond to the comments and the concerns, you can say, you can add another section in the resolution saying, 5A will be sharos as a solution. So if you want to have 5A and then 5B as an alternative, I think that just muddies the water too much.
Why don't we just say that it's going to be 5B?
Because of feasibility, right? I mean, it's a question I meant to ask.
If in the future, we can change it anyway, because we're getting an alignment that has a line on a paper that we can look at, we can avoid a lot of this angst by making it 5B. And then as things develop in that direction, which they're likely to do over time, then...
Yeah, I mean, if we had indication from the property owners, but they spoke very clearly in the last process.
Well, these property owners have spoken.
No, I know, but that's because we moved it away from, you know, we've not hearing from the rural folks today, because we've moved the alignments in. And, but they spoke very clearly in 2021, so I want to, this kind of gets at maybe both of your things. One, if circumstances change, we can amend the plan. We did this with our thoroughfare plan. When the high school wanted to build a barn, and we wanted to, you know, the bus barn, we, when presented with the opportunity, one can amend the plans. But until that time, you know, I guess what I would say to Jason's point is that nothing precludes us from making the sharo as the safety improvement tomorrow, you know, like it doesn't, it's separate from the Oxford-area trail, honestly. I've heard that there are traffic and pedestrian safety issues on Northridge that we should probably address, whatever happens, and if it takes 20 years from the path. So I want to just float some language, because I think it captures what, I mean, I think verbally, we on Optab heard the Northridge folks who said, "Our street's just not safe", and I want to put down on paper our commitment to that. And so, you know, just we're dismissed this, and I would like to amend the resolution to have, I guess, a number two, if that's, which is, "The City of Oxford resolves to study and address," and I'll share this language, "traffic safety issues in the affected street corridors, e.g. Hester, Northridge, due for an honor, in the short term through enforcement and minor improvements, and in the medium to long term through traffic calming and similar permanent roadway design improvements." So what that would mean is...
So that would be a new two?
Yeah, that would be the new two.
And three would be resolution?
So if we new stop bars at the stop signs, if we want to do sharos to enhance bicycle safety as an interim design thing, it doesn't deal with this line, but it addresses their concerns. But if we get the grant, then we can actually, we could move the curb, we can install design, traffic calming, to actually make Northridge less of a thoroughfare and more of a calm neighborhood street. So that's just kind of, having heard the folks from Northridge and their concerns, that's my way of kind of thinking we make an explicit commitment to them.
You also would be reviewing any grant applications before they're ever submitted?
Yeah. So, you know, so I guess with the attached, if, yeah, is that number two?
Yeah, I think that's a, that change is fine. So you would be having a, you would be having a new Section 2, and then take the Section 2 and make it Section 3.
Yes, and you want me to read that again, just for?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So that the City of Oxford resolves to study and address traffic safety issues in the affected street corridors, e.g. Hester, Northridge, due for honor, in the short term through enforcement and minor improvements, and in the medium to long term through traffic calming and similar permanent roadway design improvements.
Okay, that's the motion. If there are second to the motion, then we can discuss it.
Second.
Thank you. Now, discussion on the amendment.
Yeah, I wouldn't imagine there'd any objection to that, right? It doesn't change anything, it just adds to what we're all concerned about.
Well, and I think it's a good thing for the people in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, we really heard them, and I think we knew that already, is that I know why Northridge was planned the way it was, but when you have an extra-wide roadway with no parking on it, lo and behold, people speed. And so I think there are ways to improve Northridge, no matter what happens, and I honestly think this conversation brings that stuff in a forth, to the fore that we might not have had it otherwise. So I think the trail could make it safer for all those reasons. But, yeah, there's still a lot of design that would have to be done. This just commits to the dotted line, so we could get the grants to do the design work, to get the grants to do the improvements.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the amendment?
I have, oh, no, not in the minute.
Okay, let's stick with that. Okay, all those in favor of David's amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So that's now Section 2, and what says here, Section 2 on page 30, is now Section 3. That's what's on the table right now.
Just to be clear about why this route was selected, you said feasibility, and more specifically, it's because we have rights here that we don't have anywhere else, that otherwise, something like 5B might be a better option.
Yeah, but I think that it's one of those things, would you like to see it built in your lifetime?
Yeah.
Oxford is a very slow-growing community. This is why we were comfortable with the alignment, you know, in between Terry Dudley's property and the properties backing on Prevalent, because there have been subdivision proposals in the past there. It's likely to be developed, and that could be a mutual benefit to the developer of that, you know. We just heard really strongly from the property owners north of Oxford in the township that they wanted nothing to do with this. So it's, it would be very speculative to, it will grow in that direction sometime, but it could be...
Decades.
Decades.
From the issue of concern about safety, I feel like my road is somewhat an example of it. So I live right next to Kramer, and so especially as busing has gone away, there's been a lot more bikers. So I'm on North Locust, it's a very busy road, and it's a little bit different in terms of visibility, because there's always parking. So it's a little bit, you have to get in the right window, so you can see the cars that are coming down North Locust as you're backing out of your driveway. But that being said, you can see, the cars are the hardest part, and Northridge isn't going to have that problem, right? You shouldn't have a lot of parking. The visibility problem is the cars that are driving down North Locust, not the sidewalk, because there's nothing, there should not be anything impeding your view. And if there is something impeding your view of backing out onto the sidewalk, that's dangerous for the pedestrians. You should be able to see the bikers coming from both sides, just if it eases anyone's concern from someone who has children darting out all the time, that I can see them very clearly, because they're not on the other side of the cars parked on the road. And so the same thing with the kids that are biking, I can also see them very clearly. On one side, on the other side, well, it's on the same side. My husband is a biker as well, and he was actually on a trail that is in a part of the township. And because of the visibility problems with shrubbery, he, and it was a young driver who just pulled out into the driveway and actually hit him on his bike. So I understand the safety issues very intimately, both in where I live, and then from my loved one being hit by a car. But that being said, the, it wasn't the fact that the bike path was intersecting with that opening, it was the fact that there was a hedge impeding visibility. So there are very clear things that can be done, and from my understanding of Northridge, it's a pretty high-visibility area that I would feel that it would be much more simple than our situation on North Locust, that has the sidewalks running down every single house down that way. So as a form of comfort, know that you have somewhat of an example down North Locust and other places that are very, in my opinion, easily managed, and a little bit more complicated because of the parking along the, along the cars, or along the road.
But of course, if there's sharos, then they're going to be on the other side of whatever cars might be there.
Which I...
So they wouldn't be on the sidewalk.
And the, and it's all about data, right? An evidence-based policy, and that sharos are a Band-Aid on a problem for how we have this multimodal transportation, right? So it's a, it's a first step. Does it make it as safe as a bike pathway? No. I mean, I personally, I want kids to be biking on the sidewalk. I don't want them in the road. I want them to be biking to Kramer on the sidewalk, and it's a sidewalk. I know that my driveway is coming up to the sidewalk, I'm going to look both ways, just like everyone does. So I would prefer the safest possible, if I'm imagining a child on a bike, I want the safest avenue possible, and that, to me, is not the road.
So I would agree with that. Then the question is, if we have a temporary option for possibly a better path later, do we deal with the sharo now, in hopes that we have a better option altogether? And also, you provided another option that sounded good to me. I was wondering if we know how many property owners object on Northridge or otherwise to behind their property? We know there's some objection, but is anywhere close to the objection of those in front of the yard?
Now you're into takings.
Yeah, I know, it's a different, it's a different beast, and not that we would even want to do a taking, but if we knew there were only two or three property owners, they might be won over with contrition of some sort.
Yeah, it was really, it was a very interesting, I think there was a, the conversation, the front yard versus backyard, is kind of a meaningful distinction to people. And it's my, my sense that although not as many people from Prevalent are here, that people don't love it in their backyard either. And so it's, so I think that the public right-of-way is honestly, right now, the only realistic strategy in that part of town, absent a commitment to takings of a number of people's backyards, and...
Okay.
It is our staff recommendation that we not, that we keep with the 5A in the public right-of-way, whether it's through sharos, or even just sharos for now, and we build everything, and then we figure out that part later. Because you're right, it could, something could annexen or something, but I would adopt it in the right-of-way, the, behind the houses and private property, it would kill, it would kill the project for generations. Like, that's what, I strongly believe that.
Okay. Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
On this? Okay. I sense that this is going to pass. I want my colleagues to know, I'm voting no, primarily to keep it on the record that it was not a unanimous decision, and I just want to support those neighbors. So that's what, what my vote is about. And now you can call the roll.
It's a voice vote.
Oh, it's a voice vote, it's a resolution. I was ready to go. That's how long we've been talking about this. All right, all those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. No. All right, resolution is adopted. Thank you, everybody, for coming and commenting and sharing your views. We appreciate it very much. Okay, we will move now to the second resolution.
A resolution to accept the recommendation of the Oxford Parking and Transportation Advisory Board to clarify that when Oxford-area trail multi-use path replaces a sidewalk, property owners are not responsible for its maintenance or repairs.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica, you have a couple of words on that?
Yes, just briefly, this is a clarification and another request from the Oxford Parking and Transportation Board, that the future maintenance of the trail system be responsibility of the City of Oxford. So we are committing to that, and this just further clarifies that if we do replace a sidewalk, that the future maintenance is off of the city's, and this particularly addresses our curb gutter and sidewalk program, that the city is responsible for future maintenance of the Oxford-area trail.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this one? Hi, Carla, welcome back.
I'm sorry that a lot of our folks just left, because I think this is a big deal. This would suggest that if there were to be a replacement of the sidewalk, for example, in a street like Northridge with the path, that it would be the city that would upkeep that path. So when the sidewalks needed repair, rather than the property owners paying for those sidewalks, it would be the city that would pay for those sidewalks. So that it comes as actually, like, in my opinion, a huge benefit. So you're not only getting more access, you're not only getting more transportation, you're not paying for it in the way that you would be with your standard sidewalk. I think that's only fair, because the nature of the maintenance, the increase in the width of the pathway would, would create an undue burden on the property owners in this area. So I think this is a really, a good addition, and something that makes it very fair in this context, where we would have it going through a subdivision. So I'm grateful that we're able to bring this as a resolution.
Thank you, Carla, appreciate it.
I was going to say, may I ask a question?
Oh, sure, you can ask your question.
Does that include the portion of the sidewalk that go over driveways specifically, which are often areas that need to be rebuilt?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. It would all be, it would all be the Oxford-area trail, so.
Okay. I just want it on the record, so people know.
Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address this resolution?
My name is Tamoko Brown, I'm 100 Prevalent Drive. I just want to, we had this conversation before, I just want to clarify that the city maintenance of that trail portion is that including snow clearance, because students use those paths to bus stops and those kind of things, that I think this came up last time we had that.
Thank you. Jessica, you want to respond to that?
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Actually brought up what I forgot to mention. As part of this, Optab did request that the city research how to do winter snow and ice removal on the trail. It is not something that this resolution would mandate at this time, but it's something that they're asking us to research.
Okay, so it will be researched. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address this one? Okay, thank you. Any discussion, councilors?
Well, I just want to thank, because I think it was those kind of comments, this is new to us, the idea of a multi-use pathway replacing a sidewalk. People raised really good questions about who's responsible for this, and I think we took this to heart, to come up with an answer. I think the short answer is, it's not the property owner. You know, like, if you now have this multi-use path in the public right-of-way in front of your house, it's not your responsibility. And so this resolves the property owner of that, of that responsibility. How we clear it, and ensure it's cleared, is a practical issue we're going to have to look at. And I think what the resolution talks about is, I don't think the city is right now committing to shoveling everyone's pathway, but particularly in approaches to schools and so forth, that the city will explore feasibility to try to figure out how to best do that. So to be determined, but I don't think this would necessarily, it's on our radar in part because people brought it up, and I really appreciate citizens doing that.
Okay.
I was, I was just going to note, you know, I think we've all established that this is no kind of small thing, but you can see regularly how much people are kind of paying when it comes to sidewalk and curb maintenance in any of our city agendas, or if you're a property owner who has had to pay that. So, you know, this is, this is a big deal to have that kind of maintenance lifted from the shoulders of the residents.
Yep. Ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution is adopted. We'll move to C.
A resolution directing the finance director were designee to calculate the difference between the excise hotel tax budget estimate versus actual revenue collected from January 1st to November 30th each year. If revenue exceeds the budgeted amount, a supplemental budget appropriation will be created to transfer up to $50,000 to the housing trust fund.
Okay. Jason, would you like to move this one?
Actually, I prefer...
If I, I would like to explain it if I could. This is as a request of Councilor Bracken, and Heidi and I worked on this very closely, and I have a visual, but I'm not sure my click shares... very closely and, um, I could, I have a visual, but I'm not sure my click share is working quickly. So, if you can imagine, oh. Look at this. It's, guys, this is the ugliest chart, but I think it works. Um, okay. So, the city has a 3% hotel tax and a 3% convention tax. That together is a 6% hotel and convention tax, all right? Then, but what happens with that? Well, right now, 3% of our convention tax goes to Enjoy Oxford, okay? Then, of those who come from hotel, the hotel tax, 3% of the hotel tax from short-term rentals currently goes into Housing Trust Fund. 3% hotel tax that comes from hotels goes into the general fund. With me so far? This resolution would say that if the hotel tax coming from hotels exceeds our annual budgeted amount, and we would determine that from January to November, because we had to pick a date, um, then up to 50,000 would go into the Housing Trust Fund. So, that is our recommendation. I think I got what you were hoping for, um, but if I got it wrong, please let us know. But this is our best interpretation of what we thought you were asking for.
Okay. Thank you very much. I still need a motion to adopt it.
Sorry.
Which generally comes before stuff.
I have moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Thank you for the staff report. That's all right. Jason wanted it that way. I'm willing to have it. We don't care. All right. Um, it's been moved and seconded and we've had the staff report. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution?
Pete McCarthy, 6073 Contreras Road. I'm, I'm not opposed to funding the Housing Trust Fund. I just don't like the vehicle of taking it from the hotel tax because the whole initial idea was to sit there and fund things, enjoy Oxford, we need to be promoting business and that type of stuff. Now, if you wanted to somehow tax rental property, then that's housing and then that makes sense. But this is, it's like asking the police, the, the police department has X amount of dollars over. Well, let's take their money and put it into housing. And I'm sure that, I'm sure the police chief can come up with a good place to put that money. We need to be developing business. We need to be developing business coming into the community. We need to be maybe putting posters up and trying to get people to want to come to your wine and cheese festivals and the beer festival and the, the cars and everything else because we're trying to bring business into town. I don't see the Housing Trust Fund in that category. It seems like we're stealing from it, where we should be investing in the business community because goodness sakes, also in the, in the comprehensive plan, we want business to come to town. We want a lot of business to come to town and this isn't the way to do it.
Thank you, Pete. Appreciate it. Hi, Carla.
Hi. Sorry, guys, I'm back again since we're, since I'm still here. I'm just going to toss in my two cents on this one. Um, I think it's a good idea and, um, I actually, you know, am the current board president for Moon Co-op. One of our challenges is finding and retaining quality employees. A big part of that challenge is finding places where they can live affordably in our town. I think that's a challenge that many businesses share. Um, and I think that coming up with ways that we can have housing affordability is critical to that overall economic ecosystem that we need if we want to succeed as a community. So, this doesn't seem that far off to me.
Thank you, Carla. Glenn? Welcome back.
Glad to be back. Glad I'll be junior 158 Silverleaf Drive. I just had a couple of questions I know that probably aren't going to get answered, so I'm just going to run off of a whole bunch of assumptions here. When you guys make decisions on council about moving forward city policies, please take into consideration that there are people outside of this city that are looking very intently on whether or not they want to move here, invest here, start businesses or create jobs. Uh, when you have a resolution like this one, you are clearly setting the example of where you want to go based on the kind of money that you are putting forward. It is my understanding that we just had a levy passed that a very large institution also gave us money about with a very specific condition. And there was a previous resolution, it might even have been an ordinance, that was associated with this particular thing and that it affected a couple of other organizations. Now, I believe that it has changed to suit another directive. Uh, I, I agree with a couple of the individuals. Actually, I agree with both sides of the previous comments that were made, but please take into consideration that we are on a clock and that there is one that I would believe is significantly more important to the financial health of our city than the other one. And this particular resolution makes it feel like you are making a decision that flies in the face of several organizations that are very intent and invested in you doing economic development to bring businesses here to Oxford.
Thank you, Glenn. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to address it? Welcome in.
Thank you. Um, Anne Fur, 1345 Dana Drive. Uh, Councilor Ragoo and Councilor Bracken, thank you very much for, um, this resolution. You've been active participants in the work of, um, the Oxford Area Solutions for Housing over the last two years and, uh, one of the things that we've talked about there is, um, what the role of the city is in relation to, um, ensuring that housing for all means, um, that where the biggest need is, according to your 2020 housing assessment, is for affordable rental for people who can only afford up to, uh, $1,000 a month. Um, and I don't remember all of the specifics about the Housing Trust Fund, but I think that this validates an earlier commitment to, um, putting some financial support behind that, um, claim to be high priority, um, of the city. So, I want to thank you for doing that. I mean, the conversation, the extended conversation, um, earlier about the trail, um, uh, the sense of you're damned if you do, you're damned if you do, you're damned if you do. Um, I want to congratulate the two of you for really following through, uh, with that value. It's one I believe in deeply. And, um, I am a property owner and, um, Phase 5 of the trail is scheduled to go, uh, right outside of my backyard and I'm thinking, hey, I haven't had an assessment for my driveway and sidewalk yet. I mean, we've only been there four years, but hey, maybe I want you to put Phase 5 through, uh, my front yard and save me, uh, get my show, not have our neighbors snowblow our, uh, sidewalk for us and save me that assessment. Um, and it really shows, um, that yes, I agree with everything that was said about the safety and traffic, but yeah, it, it makes a difference where you live and your advocacy. Um, so, um, I'm just saying, I notice those things and a lot of other people notice those things. And, um, I in general have tremendous regard for council and staff, um, and it's good when, uh, it becomes clear, um, that yes, you make choices and they have money associated with them and some people benefit and other people do not benefit. And so, I congratulate you for bringing that resolution and for council members for considering it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Is there anyone else? Okay. Thank you, uh, everyone, for your comments. We appreciate it. Counselors, have any comments or questions?
I would maybe just add from the Enjoy Oxford Board meeting this week, um, since, you know, the, as Jessica's amazingly clear infographic showed us.
Great arrows, by the way.
Such good arrows. Um, it does, you know, that, that's part of the money, oh, words, I'm so tired, sorry. Um, part of the money flow, for lack of a better word, um, that does impact Enjoy Oxford, but our board did explicitly ask Kim Daggy, you know, are you, how are we feeling, post some of those discussions over the last couple of council meetings? Um, so, she feels good and, you know, we are in agreement that we can have discussions on how best to support Enjoy Oxford, how to partner with Enjoy Oxford. So, I see this. Again, I would echo Anne's congratulations. I think this is a really creative way to make some progress with the housing fund because, uh, you know, the short-term rental tax just hasn't, with the, the software that we need to pay for, it really hasn't been enough to accrue anything to do kind of meaningful change and this is a, a step forward. So, thank you both for bringing this forward.
Okay. Anyone else? Be ready.
Go first. I have a question, but I want to hear from other folks.
I just wanted to echo what Carla said. I mean, as a small business owner who is growing and trying to hire people, it's really hard to find people who can live in Oxford and afford housing. So, to be able to generate something that would possibly address that, so businesses can grow, because you can't grow without workers, um, is just such an important part of economic development.
Okay. So, and, and my question was, and I, I, I would, I really commend you for bringing this forward and then I didn't know how it was going to come out, but correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, all this is committing to is we're now saying that there will be a budgetary conversation of this amount of money, like our, our commitment to Enjoy Oxford, there's a floor to Joy Oxford and if there's more than there's a, there will be a conversation about how much will be budgeted. This just means this will be part of that conversation and it sets a ceiling of $50,000, but it doesn't really set a floor. So, if it's a dollar over the budgeted amount, it may not be significant. If it's much over the budget amount, maybe Enjoy Oxford would get somewhat more, maybe some. And so, it's just a matter of, it's, it doesn't lock in, it's not like an entitlement, but, but it starts a conversation where like, we're going to have a conversation, how much should go to housing out of this and we just have to trust our budget process to, to allocate the pie. Am I missing something or?
Yeah, I do want to clarify. I don't know if the, my fancy chart can come back on because it's so, okay. This, this right here, this impact, this does not impact Enjoy Oxford at all.
Okay.
Because they get the 3% convention tax. What this does impact is the general fund.
Okay.
So, what we're talking about, but similar, um, David-
Okay.
-is that we will have a budgeted amount for the hotel tax and the general fund.
Okay.
And then, if our budgeted amount is exceeded, then up to 50,000 would move over into the Housing Trust Fund and Heidi and I would calculate that like on December 1st to be able to squeeze it into the December supplemental, uh, reading to do that transfer. So, that's our recommendation. It does not impact Enjoy Oxford at all because theirs is the convention tax portion of this fancy infographic.
But that, but that again was a conversation that now would be subject to budget, right?
And that is going to move to that newly established Economic Development Fund.
Okay. All right. So, but I think the model is roughly similar, which is we're having, there's a floor to the commitment, then there's a budgetary, let's look at the numbers and how they're going to be.
It's a similar approach, yes.
And so, if the numbers aren't panning out, maybe they, if they're, if they're much better than we anticipate, it's a, it's a stream of money, which we don't currently have for the Housing Trust Fund that generates anything. So, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Um, people were talking as if this affects the budget, it's mostly through excess and we get to decide on that. And also, it might mean nothing. Like, I really hope this generates revenue, but if it doesn't, we have to come back with other legislation, find a way to fund it because it's one of our biggest commitments and we're not currently funding it.
Mm-hmm. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted. We'll move to ordinances. First reading.
An ordinance correcting the Calico Acres subdivision plat to affirm the name Jeffrey Drive for certain public streets therein.
Okay. And Sam, tell us what this is about.
This is a, a clarification to help some of the residents. So, I see some head nods, so maybe some folks know about this. Many of our staff know, know this. We refer to Jeffrey Drive, but the county does not. So, we need some legislation to make sure that we can memorialize it with the county. We've contacted all the owners, let them know, uh, about this. No one has any major concerns with it. Uh, originally, the subdivision of Calico Acres, um, had a cul-de-sac in it and so, it was Circle at one point. And then, when it got replatted, it was Jeffrey with no suffix. And so, turns out that the numbers on the short Jeffrey and the long Jeffrey, as Public Safety, uh, calls it, uh, there's no conflicts. So, by having Drive, it just makes it more clear and allows everyone to, to use that, so.
So, it'd be all the same?
Correct.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this one? Okay. I didn't think we'd get anybody. Come on up. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Anne Lorberou and I recently moved to Jeffrey Drive and that's what's causing this problem. Because the county sees me as Jeffrey Circle and, you know, that's, a lot of my paperwork in the sale was saying that was the address and Oxford sees me as Jeffrey Drive. So, I would like to know one address, but it's also a functional issue on any time I order something online-
Sure.
-am I going to get it or not? I've had, um, Walmart deliver to Jeffrey Circle. So, at night, I'm looking around in people's mailboxes trying to find my orders because they say it's been delivered. You, you got to file a police report if it's not there.
Okay.
I know where it's going to be. So, I just want that to stop. I, I put, um, an ad, you know, giving away stuff on neighbor's share this weekend. Half the people are like, I'm outside your house and I'm like, you're not here. So, I'd really like to, you know, have us one address and also people find it on the app.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it and we hope to resolve your issue.
Thank you.
All right. Is there further discussion? This will come up at our next meeting where we'll vote on it. Let's go to second readings then, please.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3750, supplemental budget ordinance number six, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2024.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Heidi?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I actually, with the passage of the resolution regarding the transfer, the hotel tax money, I have, Heather has a friendly amendment for the second reading of the supplemental-
Okay.
-to include a transfer to the hotel tax fund and to increase the revenue for the hotel tax within the general fund. It's in the resolution. Okay. Oh, you need the amount? It's $34,190 and fifty years. That's it.
So, this is not in our packet currently? Is that what you're saying?
We have the resolution.
Ordinance.
I'm sorry, the ordinance, um, already prepared, but so, this is a friendly amendment to the current one because we had to wait for that resolution passed.
Got it.
Is that clear?
Yes.
We trust you.
All right.
We knew we wanted to do it last meeting of the year, so this is our last opportunity.
So, it's already, you've got it.
So, we need you to adopt the friendly amendment.
Okay. Is there an objection to a friendly amendment to that extent? Hearing no objections, so ordered. It is now accepted.
So, I'll make a motion?
You don't need to make a motion. It's a friendly amendment-
Okay.
-and there's no objection. If there was an objection, then we'd have a discussion and vote. Robert comes to the rescue.
Now, that, that's all clear as well.
Yeah, it is.
Uh, I do have a few increases, uh, or a few changes to the second reading. We did a slight $150 discrepancy with the, uh, property tax revenue. Um, we did, we were able to increase the income tax by $80,450 to bring that total to 435, 450 to allow for additional transfers to the capital funds. For first reading, we had not received the first December payment and at the time, we did a conservative estimate, so that was nice to be able to increase that a bit. Uh, I've also included a reduction of $750,000 in grant money that was not received in 2024 in the Oates Fund. Um, we were receiving reimbursable grant money. There is a bit of uncertainty as to when that money's going to come in and we don't, And we don't, because it was in our budget, it's best to reduce it when we get for the auditors. I've also increased the budget expense of the police salaries, exceeding the budget due to the new position that was added. Initially, we had asked for $20,000. A lot of factors came into play with that last payroll, which included increased holiday overtime rates and some holiday payouts that have to be, a lot of times, police officers will have, in their contract, they have to pay out a holiday prior to the next holiday. So, that might have been a holiday earned in a prior to the year before. I think we're going to be okay, but unfortunately payroll isn't completed till tomorrow. So, just to be on the safe side, that money will go back in the general fund if it's not spent. I've also increased the transfers to the Capital Improvement and Equipment Funds based on the increased revenues.
Okay. Thank you very much. And let me find where I'm at. Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Now that you've had it so clearly explained? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone on council who would like to discuss this exciting motion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Naveley?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, we'll move to number two.
An ordinance to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve a conditional use for indoor entertainment facility located at 110 South Locust Street, Oxford, Ohio 45056.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Sam, any changes from last time?
No changes on Jesse Baker's put, put in the escape room. Initially, he said he's been patiently waiting for.
I know he has. I know he has. All right, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Thank you very much. Is there anyone on council who has further comments or concerns about this?
Maybe you could create an escape room, like, how can I escape from city council? All I want is my conditional use for an entertainment facility, one planning commission, and two readings of council. In two minutes, you'll have found the key.
It's all about timing. They're trying to get you out by 9:30, so.
Yeah, I thank you, I express my thank you for your patience, but more importantly, for thank you for developing in our community and creating something that's going to make our community more fun for all ages. So, that you had to go through this process, a little unfortunate, but I hopefully won't deter you from doing this. Awesome thing, so we look forward to being there.
Okay, you ready to vote? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Naveley?
Yes. Ordinance is unanimously approved. And we will move now to announcements and communications. And I am happy to start with our city manager, Doug Elliott. Welcome back, my friend.
Thank you. I'm going to be real brief. It's good to be back. And I thank Jessica, Assistant City Manager, and all my department heads for their hard work during my absence and their leadership. And lastly, I wish everybody a happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
JJ? Heidi?
Happy holidays.
Chief Deathridge? I saw Casey.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, okay. Great. Sam? Okay.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Nothing, thank you.
I actually want to say a couple of things. One, when it comes to Robert's rules, I will always defer to the mayor. But, you know, I'm loaded to make comments, but I want to share this as an educational piece. And your discussions about the bike path. If you find yourself in Dayton, by the University of Dayton, what they did there was because the bike path, or the path is along the river, they did do the sharrow because they wanted to get connection on a north-south to that piece. So, if you go to Brown Street where the main entrance is to the University of Dayton, and you go north towards the river, you would see an example of what that might look like on a fairly well-traveled vehicle, or path, or vehicular road. But what they did there is they narrowed that lane. Brown Street used to be two lanes, or I should say, four lanes. They narrowed it to two. And then they moved the traffic over to Main Street, which is State Route 48, so that the traffic kind of got diverted there. I will tell you, as a user, it worked. It got me to go in on Main Street, because I don't go Brown Street anymore. I don't know how safe it is or not, because I don't travel the road. But it would be an example of part of the discussions you're having if you ever find yourself up that way. And then finally, a personal comment. Whenever I come into the city as a parent, because I, my daughter, as you know, is a senior at Miami, I always marvel at how beautiful the city looks, particularly Christmas time with the lights. Just from an outsider's perspective, it's, looks fabulous and festive. Happy holidays.
Have you seen the alleys?
Quick, Mike.
Just to remind everybody that free parking isn't in effect. Continue to shop local. Happy holidays.
Congratulations to Casey on Holiday Fest and happy holidays.
I have to give a quick, quick about my trip for the United Nations Climate Conference. So, I was able to go to Azerbaijan, which is kind of a Russian proxy mildly scary country. And, but I spent a lot of time with the Ukrainian delegation, who I was able to get my visa through. And it was so, I, it was 60,000 people coming together for this shared, universal problem, existential crisis, right? And it really made me feel hopeful because we all know that there is this energy transition that is and must happen more rapidly than some petroleum-based countries would like to make us think. There, it also highlighted the security crisis that is happening with authoritarian governments that are based on petroleum. And then what it is doing to the rest of the world, how many wars are being fought on that behalf. And it made me very proud to sit there and to hear them talk about local governments, how we really need to step up to the plate as our federal government may not be doing as much as they have the past four years. That it is more important than ever. And so, as I only have one year left with David, I take it to the rest of y'all that we have to fight like hell, right? And that this is so important. And the things that we're doing have a ripple effect throughout the rest of the world. Transitioning to solar energy, if we can do geothermal, if we can, whatever we can do to get away from fossil fuels saves people around the world. So, we need to continue to push towards that with our closed landfill. And that it is a very well-known thing that our NATO allies have said that Russia is behind the misinformation about client, climate denial. That is a huge, they have factories of people telling you that solar panels do X, Y, Z. And we, we have an obligation as local elected officials, like, people are looking towards us to do this. And then on top of it, for Ukraine, one of the things that they're doing, Russia is specifically targeting their power plants because they know that is how they're going to try to take them down. And so, they are putting wind turbines up on the front lines so they can keep going and keep fighting, because you can't hit a wind turbine with a missile. And they are putting solar panels everywhere with the hope that Ukraine will fuel the rest of Europe once they maintain their freedom. So, our sister city, Weydubno, there are so many things we can do with that. I mean, they, they want more American cities and European cities to form sister ships with Ukrainian cities. And that, it's awesome we already have that, and what else can we do? And this is not to say to belittle the suffering of other people around the world. There's so much. But the climate change and fossil fuels and climate security in Ukraine is so pivotal. So, I'm very proud of what we've done and everything we've done. And even when it comes to bike lanes and trying to really reduce that dependency, it all matters so much. So, as much as we, we, change is hard and there's that tension there. This is the future, and energy will transition whether we want to or not. And we need to do our part in that. So, I'm very proud of us as we continue to move past the tension and be creative that we can, we, we just need to do more.
Thank you for going and for that report.
I texted Bill as soon as I got internet. I was like, I'm so proud of you. Like, it just, it means so much.
It really is. And by the way, Weydubno would love to have the donation of, of solar panels. So, they've specifically asked for that. We ought to figure out how to help them.
Congratulations to Jessica and staff for the Clean Ohio Grant for the Oats Phase Five. Excellent work. And thank you to Mike Dreisbach and the Service Department for beautifying our city this time of year. Thank you for that. And season's greetings, whether it's Christmas, or Hanukkah, or Kwanzaa. Wishing you all a wonderful season.
Jason?
Yeah, happy holidays. Safe travels to everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Just one thing that I'm going to, I'll follow up with an email, but I'm hoping that we can have a council discussion item that I had asked for previously that kind of kicked off a conversation about deer management. Before we go into the budget season, but with enough knowledge from how this new model has, you know, we changed up the hunting season. I'd love to, early January, to kind of have a report on how that's going. And also, some of the costs and some of the nuisances from deer. Because if, if we find out that that program really hasn't made a dent in the deer population, what's, what's Phase Two? And so, I would really like for us to, we've evaluated some different options, but I really thinking, like, you know, I, I'd like to think that we made a dent with this change, but if it hasn't, you know, the deer are hammering our forests hard. And if we want a future forest, we have to manage them. And so, I'd like to be prepared to do that. But I just want to say, having been to the awards ceremony, including people, like, so we, last week was the staff awards ceremony. Mike and I were there. It was really nice to hang out with city staff. People who range from five years of service to 30 years of service. And how, really diverse and wonderful group of people. And just, you know, I got the real privilege that I have of living and working in the city of Oxford and being part of the city of Oxford, from walking in the morning and seeing our service, service department folks, like, scraping ice in front of businesses, or, or digging to get to 10-inch cast iron mains on North Campus, or our police, or our fire, you know, I could go on and on. But, you know, and that's the city service, the staff side. You know, conversations like tonight about changing our alleys or what to do. These are not always super easy conversations. But Oxford's an amazing community. Like, we can have these difficult conversations because we're trying to move forward. You know, like, it'd be really easy to just not try. And to just maintain the status quo. So, the fact that we have these tough conversations is, is a product of a town that's trying to do better, even if the pathway forward is not always clear. And so, it's a privilege to be part of those conversations. So, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, which falls late this year. And however, other people celebrate Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you very much. I want to also wish everyone a happy holiday. Hanukkah starts right at the same time as Christmas this year. And so, whichever one you happen to be celebrating, or if it's just the season, happy holidays to you. I want to thank Casey for running another really good holiday festival. Always appreciate it. I also want to echo the free parking and remind people that that lasts this year until the 11th of January. So, go ahead and take advantage of that and go uptown and eat out and shop uptown at the, at the stores uptown. Finally, I want to welcome Doug back and hope that you're back to 100% as quickly as possible. And thank Jessica for picking up the slack while Doug had his, his health issues taken care of. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.